To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you read the statement of certification of the meeting?
The meeting has been advertised according to sunshine law.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Beniro.
Here.
Mayor Melham.
Here.
Andrew Conti.
Here.
Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Bowles.
Here.
Mr. Corvo.
Here.
Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Blomming.
Here.
Ms. Rico.
Here.
Ms. Novarado.
Here.
Mr. Sinabria. Mr. DiLorenzo.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Tavito.
Do we have a motion for the approval in a minute of the January tenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting?
Some of.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Beniro.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Here. Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Bowles.
Switch seats.
Mr. Corvo.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Blomming.
Ms. Blomming.
Ms. Novarado.
Yes.
And Ms. Rico.
Yes.
Chairman's comments. It's been brought to my attention that we're to form a subcommittee for developments for projects in town over twenty units. On this subcommittee it'd be myself, Mr. Conti, and Mr. Banda. Correspondence and payment of bills. Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, applications before the board. We have PB two thousand and nineteen dash oh-two. Belleville High School Outdoor Classroom Amphitheater. Do we have a representative from the Board of Ed?
Yes.
She was Boswell Park. You're at the Boswell Park.
I'm with Boswell Engineering.
Is this a good place for this? Because I don't know if you want me to turn in for the residents or...
Hang a little more so if they want to come over there, they can probably come over there.
Good or no good?
Make it a little shorter.
Well, it's a little high. It's a little low. Okay. Lock it up.
All right.
There you go.
We've got that all set. Now you guys can see it.
How's that?
Is that better? And I'll stand here? Okay.
Okay, I'm going to place your address with your place raised right here. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
Would you please state your name to the back?
My name is Nikki Lou Ludes. That's spelled L-O-U-L-O-U-D-I-S. And I'm with Boswell Engineering at three thirty Phillips Avenue, South Park in San Francisco.
Thank you. Please just tell your first name.
N-I-C-K-I.
Thank you.
I would just like to announce the roles as president or attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. As I mentioned, my name is Nikki Lou Ludes. I'm here as a representative for the Board of Education who has retained our firm to design and present this project to you tonight. While I understand that this is a courtesy review, I'd like to provide some of my qualifications, if I may, being that I've never appeared before this board. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology. I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-four, and I've appeared in front of several awards in Bergen County, Condon and Middlesex Counties. I also represent the Borough of Milford as the Borough Engineer, and I'm also the Board Engineer for Hasbro Heights Planning Zone Works. That said, the proposal for you tonight is for an amphitheater-style open classroom, which will be constructed at the Board of Education's Belleville High School. Belleville High School, as you know, is located at one hundred Passaic Avenue, and the classroom that the Board of Ed is proposing will be located in a grassy lawn area immediately right of the entrance that goes into gymnasium. So as you come up Passaic Avenue, you have your main entrance, then you have to the right of that your gymnasium entrance. This will be in the lawn area between the parking lot, you know, the main parking lot, and then the parking lot that goes into the gym. The amphitheater is basically no more than a landscape, not even a landscape. It's a retaining wall, but it's really a short wall. It's a two-tiered wall made of modular block. The two tiers come up to three feet, and then you have a parapet for an additional eighteen inches, giving you a total height of four and a half feet. The modular block we've specified is E.P. Henry. It's a rustic-looking block. It's going to match the color of the school building itself. The seating areas, the two tiers, will each have stone pavers set in sand, and those will match the color of the wall. And then the parapet is going to have either a modular block wall cap or a bold-nose paver, stone paver, to match the stone of the seating. The diameter of this, you know, it's a semicircle, but the diameter is thirty-two feet. It's intended to seat anywhere between twenty-five and thirty students, which is what I understand the typical size of a classroom at Belleville High School. In terms of grading, we're doing some minor grading behind the wall. The back of the wall faces Passaic Avenue, and what you're going to have is a very gently sloping verma up to within eighteen inches of the top of the wall. So you're basically grading up to three feet, and that'll all be backfilled and compacted and topsoiled. There will be a perforated drainage pipe at the footing, which is common in this type of construction, and that will either be daylighted or connect to an existing catch basin up here. You have several catch basins. This is a flat area, but it generally slopes towards the building. Other than that, we're going to require that the contractor provide us engineering shop drawings for review and approval. We're also going to require that they install silt fence and filter fabric for the catch basin so that any construction-related sediment doesn't get into the on-site drainage system. I know that this was approved by the Board of Ed and also by the New Jersey State Department of Education, and that I think the Board of Ed would like to have this operational by September. That's really it.
Any other questions? There's no vote, right? It's just a curse.
It's just a concept.
Frank.
It's a concept.
Okay.
If you have any questions, come here. It's just she's introducing a concept, and we could ask, you know, the board and the public could ask questions about it, but it's already been approved by the...
Anybody in the public have any questions about this project?
Yeah, I just have one question. I don't know if you're aware that the city in Newark has a water line under the front lawn, a major water line. Is this over or anywhere near that water line?
No, it is not.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick comment. This would be the second outdoor classroom, and I'm just wondering, did the board happen to say, you know, what was the need for a second outdoor?
I'd have to defer that to the Board of Education. I'm really here on an engineer and sort of, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw it out there because I would think a second classroom would be a little unnecessary considering other things would, what could be considered to spend on itself, but of course you don't have...
I really can't talk to either the programming or the findings, so...
And if no one else goes?
Just to answer Patty's question, Michael Sheldon, I, well, I am a member of the Belleville Board of Education. Please let me know that I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, but as Chair of the Operations Committee, I have a little bit more information about this project than most others in this community may have. To answer Patty's question, yes, there is another outdoor, technically an outdoor classroom, but that's in the courtyard inside the high school itself. The plan for this project is not only to provide an additional outdoor space for our teachers to educate our students, but we also want to use this to support community activities. So, for example, when parades get underway, this could be a starting point for parades when they're homecoming events. We want the entire community to be able to access this outdoor classroom amphitheater so the one that's inside is not suitable for that purpose. This is going to serve a very unique purpose, being supportive of the entire community.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon.
So there, I wanted to backtrack. This is only for twenty to twenty-five students?
It'll seat twenty-five to thirty, roughly.
I just wondered how that would support the entire community.
I did forget one aspect. The inside of this amphitheater, to fill out the rest of the circle, we will be putting in six-by-nine concrete pavers with a soldier course edging, so it's not just the wall and the seating, but the entire circle will then be paved, so it'll be usable space.
And if I may, I remember as a former Board of Ed member, this came up a couple years ago, and there will be security cameras around, from what I understood then, making sure, you know, everything is secure at that aspect. And if I'm not mistaken, it's also going to correct some of the drainage that's currently in that area today, because if you go there and it rains, it's, so it is going to be addressing that.
Very good.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mrs. Frank.
Oh, me?
Go ahead.
Your name, please? Joan Schmidt. Is there lighting around there?
There is none proposed.
So can you use that light?
Whether or not lights will be installed later, I'm not aware.
After this outdoor classroom is finished, we are planning to extend the outdoor lighting that, there was some partial lighting that was installed along Buccaneer Drive. We are going to extend lighting all the way along Buccaneer Drive, and that amphitheater area will be illuminated at night. Mr. Graziano is also correct that there are security cameras that will be trained on this to provide extra security and safety.
Can I answer a simple question? When I'm on that street, that little roadway, and I look to my right, which is the grass where this is going to go, between that street, that little roadway, and the school itself, the back of the amphitheater, call it the highest level of the seating, that's facing, that's on the street side or that's on the school side?
That's on the street side, so the students would be facing the building.
Doesn't that close off the whole, doesn't that close it off?
Well, I don't think so, in my opinion. You're going to have the back.
Then I understand it's a perfect classroom, but it's not for a community event. I mean, you can't stand around that because you're standing behind a wall, right?
You're standing on a gently sloping area. It's kind of like a small...
Is this the rendering or no? This is just an example. Is that a rendering?
That wouldn't be so, I have not seen that before. I believe there was an earlier concept...
It doesn't make sense to me that from the street you're going to look and you're going to see the wall of the highest row of seating. It's going to go down, and the stage is there. That's prohibitive of it being open to the community because literally unless you have a seat there. If it was the other way around, you could have a lot of people standing, but that's just my two cents.
I mean, we could bring that back to the Board of Ed and we talk to them about the orientation of that.
What do you mean that's going to be facing the school then, in other words?
The seating faces the school. Right now, we're showing it at a slight angle.
I have a rendition right here.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that came from, but I know that if there was an earlier concept planned, that it's been changed a little bit.
It has three tiers, but it's supposed to be two.
Right. It's now two.
The whole thing is you're facing the school. You really can't see it. All you can see is a retaining wall. The whole concept is ridiculous.
The rendering that Mr. Allen was referring to, there's a caveat attached to that. That rendering is not the actual depiction of how this amphitheater will look. The rendering he has shows three seating levels. Ours has only two, and if you think about the topology, as you come into Buccaneer Drive, that is elevated three or four feet higher than the lawn area. So when you come in, you actually are above the top level of that little retaining wall. You will be able to see directly into the classroom from the roadway. If you look at the topology report, I think you have those plans, you'll see that the roadway is, I think, about a hundred and fifteen feet above sea level, whereas the lawn area is only about a hundred and ten. So there's about a five-foot change in grade from Buccaneer Drive to that lawn area.
So you're saying when you sit in these chairs, you're going to be looking into school? Mike, I can hear you. I wait, can you repeat what you said?
Joan Schmidt asked, when you're sitting in those, in that classroom, that you'll be looking into the high school, there's such a slight change in grade.
You're facing it.
Yes. The reason for that is if you look at the course of the sun throughout the day, most of the sunlight, referring to this map, the semicircle of the seating area faces in the southwest, so the sun, for the most part, is going to be behind the wall. The only person that may have to deal with the sun to some degree is the teacher using the classroom, but the students themselves are going to be facing the exterior wall of the high school and won't be looking directly into the sun. So it's been laid out with all of those considerations.
No further questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Next, we have PB two thousand and nineteen dash oh-one, Bootables LLC, three seventy-eight Main Street, block nine seven oh-four, Lot One.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Paramal, firm Gesham, block five twenty-four Union Avenue in Belleville. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant Bootables LLC proposing a new restaurant at three fifty-four, three seventy-four Main Street in Belleville, otherwise known as block nine seven oh-four, Lot One on the tax maps of Belleville. I note that applicant is currently a tenant with a lease in place and thus has the necessary standing to file and present this application before the board. Further note, the property is owned by Oster Belleville Properties LLC, and a representative of that property and entity has signed a current application which was resubmitted, authorizing the filing of this application by Bootables LLC as tenant. With that being said, the applicant is before the board here this evening seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval in order to convert seven hundred and thirty-two square feet of tenant space within an existing seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-square-foot planned retail center for use as a dining and carryout restaurant. Seating is proposed for ten patrons at five tables with two seats each. Other than the interior renovations to the existing tenant space, no other changes are proposed either to the exterior of the site itself, except to change the sign above the tenant space to advertise for the proposed restaurant. Subject property is located in the BF Planned Retail Light and Industrial Zone, and the proposed use of this tenant space is conditionally permitted in the zone. As for any variances being requested in connection with this application, it is indicated in a letter of denial from the zoning officer and is also a position of the applicant that the proposed use meets the conditions set forth in your ordinance for a carryout fast food eating establishment, and only site plan approval is required from the board. In support of this application tonight, I intend to call two witnesses. First, General Manager of the proposed restaurant, Clarissa Hernandez, will testify to the proposed operation of the business and the changes which will be made to the interior of the tenant space. Then Engineer and Planner, William Stimmel, will testify with regard to the proposed use, the applicable zoning, the parking requirement, and the proposed new site. Without further delay, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to call our first witness, Ms. Hernandez, to testify. Just so you know, tonight, as exhibits, we have plans that board members should write currently have in their packets. They are the same. They do not need to be marked. Ms. Hernandez, please.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out? Please state your name and address.
Clarissa Hernandez, eighty-one Howard Street. North, north. Oh, seven, one, oh, three. Thank you.
And Ms. Hernandez, you're the representative of the applicant entity, Bootables LLC?
Yes.
And is Bootables LLC presently leasing a small tenant space at three seventy-eight Main Street in Belleville, owned by Belleville Oster Properties LLC? And what type of business do you intend to operate?
We intend to open up a salad bar slash juice and smoothie bar.
And what types of food items would be sold at the restaurant?
So for salads, we'll have like a chipotle salad, and that'll be with chipotle chicken, mixed greens, corn, black beans, and chipotle dressing. We'll also have like a berry salad, so that'll be with like kale and strawberries, blueberries, a berry dressing, or berry vinaigrette. We'll also have smoothies, such as a blue banana, or bone banana, as we call it. So it'll be bananas, your choice of milk, so it'll be like, sorry, it'll be like one percent milk or lactose milk, whatever, your choice, and honey and agave inside of that smoothie. We'll also have fresh juices, so we'll have like a carrot with ginger and lemon juice like that. And we'll do acai bowls, and that'll be an acai with granola on top, bananas and coconut shavings. We'll also have a spinach option, so it'll be just the same, it'll just be green instead of purple. And we'll have like a vegan dessert, so it'll be vegan ice cream with crepes and some strawberries on top.
So you're very excited about that? In your research prior to deciding to open this restaurant in Belleville, did you note any other similar types of restaurants in the area offering healthy food options?
No, the only thing there is is herbalite, and as you guys know, that's only like protein shakes, and besides that, there's nothing similar.
And would you describe for the board generally how this restaurant will be designed and how it'll operate? I'm going to break over the plan for you here, so if you want to refer to it, feel free.
So when you walk in, on the right side, it'll be five tables with two chairs each, and the way you'll start is in the back, and the bathroom is located on the right side. And when you come around the line of start, and you'll be able to see all your fruits, and that is your options for your smoothies, and located behind that will be your blenders and your juice pressers. And then right after that, it's kind of like a subway layout where everything is like laid out into little panels. And after the fruits come the greens and your, all your ingredients for your salad, so your corn, your beans, your colored carrots, everything you can think of in a salad. And then that'll lead you to your register. In front of the register, we'll have like an overrefrigerator for orders and juices, like Gatorade and stuff like that, and that's it. Now you have the front side.
What are your hours of operations?
So we'll be opening at ten in the morning till nine o'clock at night, Monday through Saturday, Sunday being our closed day.
And how many employees do you anticipate having?
Just two, myself and Angelina.
And how will these employees be working within the restaurant?
Three, no, sorry. I meant three, sorry, because we also have our other friend who's going to come, and she'll be running the register and answering phone calls if we have orders to go. And I'll be on the smoothie side, and Angelina will be doing the salads, so we'll have one person at each station.
So you estimate there'd be a maximum of three employees working at any time? How are deliveries to the store going to be handled? How will you get your supplies?
We don't intend any real big deliveries, and since everything will be fresh after like the fruit and the salad ingredients, we and her both have like big vehicles, so we'll just use the back alleyway, which has a back door, and we'll just be bringing in fresh ingredients ourselves every day.
And how will the refuse and recycling generated by the store be here?
Inside the store, we'll have two metal garbage cans, one for recyclables and one for regular garbage, and we'll have a private waste company that'll supply us with a dumpster, and they'll come once a week to pick up the garbage, and if needed, more than once a week, then we'll change them.
I have no further questions of this witness.
Any members in the board?
I got it. Anybody else have any questions?
No members in the board? Anybody in the public have questions of this witness? Still good job.
I'm talking fast.
Now you're officially off the hook. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call a second witness, planner and engineer, William Stimmel. I'll qualify him. Mr. Stimmel, would you state your name?
Sure. William Stimmel, S.T.I.M.M.E.L.
And what is your business address?
My professional address is P.O. Box two eighty, Rutherford, New Jersey.
How long have you been practicing in the field of engineering?
Eighteen years, nineteen years.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
Feel free to come, you have any given time. How long have you been practicing in the field of planning, just the same as engineering?
About nine years.
Now, for what school or schools did you graduate?
N.D.I.T.
And what degree or degrees did you obtain?
Bachelor's degree in civil engineering.
And you're a licensed engineer and a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey?
I am, and both my licenses are current.
Well, except you're, as an expert.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Stimmel, would you please describe the existing site?
Certainly. I'm going to flip over the board first. Primarily going to be referring to the sheet prepared by Hubschmann Engineering. It's called Site Plan for Proposed Bootables with a date of January twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, which has been submitted to the board, as I understand it. Mr. Paramalley covered some of these points in his introduction, but I'll just reiterate them. I'm certain the board members are all well familiar with the site, but the subject property is known as block Sept ninety-seven oh-four, Lot One. It consists of an area of approximately six and a quarter acres. The site as it exists is currently developed with an existing shopping center, which is, has two buildings within it. The total square footage of the two buildings is just a hair under eighty thousand square feet. Access to the site is provided via four driveways along North Town Main Street. A total of three hundred and ten parking spaces exist on the property. Circulation around the rear of the building is provided primarily for deliveries and employee access. All customer access is from the front of the building or the westerly building space. That's the existing condition of the subject property. As the applicant had testified, they're going to reoccupy one tenant space within that eighty thousand square foot shopping center. The total area of the space they're going to occupy is about seven hundred and fifty square feet, so it's a little bit less than one percent of the overall shopping center. It's going to be located in the southern building. They'll be renovating the interior of their tenant space. They'll be replacing the existing signage with signage for their proposed store, Bootables, and there will be no changes to the building footprint, the building exterior, other than the signage to the parking or to the site access.
What is the zoning for this site?
Certainly. The subject property is located in the BF Zone, which is Planned Retail and Light Industrial. The BF Zone allows various commercial uses, including retail, banks, and gyms. Eating establishments, carryout, walk-up, restaurant, and sidewalk cafes are conditionally permitted uses in the zone, so this use is a conditionally permitted use.
And the conditional use standards, does this application meet those standards?
Certainly it does. It meets the general conditional use standards under chapter twenty-three dash eight point one of the ordinance. It also meets the specific conditional use standards for eating establishments with the carryout or fast food classification under chapter twenty-three dash eight point fourteen.
Would you describe the proposed parking that exists for the site?
Certainly. Again, there's a total of three hundred and ten parking spaces which currently exist on the subject property. Based on the calculation provided on the plan, a total of three hundred and ninety-nine parking spaces would be required for the overall shopping center based on a strict application of the zoning requirement. However, this is an existing use. The space that's going to be occupied is already factored into the calculation, so the variance related to the parking has been granted. I would say that just based on my observations of the property, and I've been out there half a dozen times to look at the parking since I was retained on this project at different times of day and different days of week, including Saturdays, there's generally at least a few parking spaces available between the westerly front of the building, westerly face of the building, rather, where the customers enter, and Main Street, and that continues all the way from the Dunkin' Donuts at the southern end of the shopping center to the grocery store at the northern end of the shopping center. And then once you get past the northern end of the building, there's that large parking area where almost no one is ever occupying the parking spaces. So as a practical matter, I think generally speaking, there is parking available for this proposed use.
Are any changes proposed to the existing parking field, driveways, or traffic circulation patterns in connection with this application?
None whatsoever.
Would you describe the signage proposed?
Certainly. I'll flip back to the architectural drawing. And I'm going to be referring to a sheet C-one prepared by W.S.M. Associates with a revision, with a date, rather, no revision date, of October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. As you can see roughly in the middle of the page, there's a depiction, color depiction of the proposed signage for the property. It's got the graphic logo towards the left-hand side of the sign. It says Bootables across the top of the panel, and then it will provide the phone number and address number for the property. The dimensions of the sign are two and a half feet, two feet, six inches by twelve feet, and it is going to be backlit.
And this will be in the existing sign location, in the existing sign band?
It will be, yes.
I understand that we're permitted conditional use, a seating only site plan approval tonight, but if this application were granted, in your opinion, would the change of use propose any detrimental effects on the property or the surrounding area?
None whatsoever.
And no further questions of this witness? And no further questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody on the board have questions of this witness? Anybody in the public have questions or comments?
A few brief words and summation?
You know what, I have a question on the sign itself.
Of course.
That, that entire property was just totally remodeled. And they did a really nice job with it. And it seems like every business down there does not have the light box signs. They have the like letter signs, I would call that technically.
You just want it to all be uniformed, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's that, what would that be called?
Backlit letter?
It's the backlit letter.
It's the backlit letter.
The applicant is, hello? Applicant is amenable to any signage, uh, you know.
It's a condition that.
Is that a halo sign, would you call it? Where each letter is individually lit?
And it's backlit.
Yeah.
It like glows around those, yeah.
Halo. Every other business down there has that. To not be uniform now, put a light box there, just kind of change the whole color.
I would recommend, and the applicant would certainly agree to having the sign designed, be subject to the approval of the zoning officer or any municipal official that the board would recommend.
That wouldn't need a back, they wouldn't come back here, right?
That would be fine.
Every other business down there has it.
Yeah. Only so it could be uniform.
We would like it to be uniform. We'd like it to look the same. We want it to be in line with the neighboring uses.
We would have no problem doing this. Sorry. We have no problem doing just as, um, they want, just to match how it is.
Thank you. No one else have any questions?
Just a brief summation, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the board for its time in hearing the present application. As you've heard, the application seeks to convert 732 square feet within the existing planned retail center for use as a dine-in, carryout restaurant, focusing on healthy food options. Uh, should this application be approved, it'll soon become a welcome option for those wanting to make healthy food choices in Belleville, as opposed to another restaurant offering food similar to what is already available. With regard to the minimum parking requirement, although 399 parking spaces are required and only 310 provided, this fact will not be changed or worsened by our present application. Further, we've heard from our expert, William Stimmel, and likely know from personal experience that the parking spaces are readily available at the subject property. And if not in front of this tenant space, then certainly on the other end of the parking field. Specifically, the applicant intends to park and have their employees park on that other end of the parking field to try to keep those spaces open in front of their tenant space for their customers. Supplies to the restaurant we purchase daily and brought into a rear door and into the tenant space by the employees, not by large delivery trucks. Refuse will be stored, uh, as the applicant suggested, and will be collected accordingly. Uh, this is a good application for the site and its current mix of tenants and tenant uses. And we believe this is a good application for Belleville as well. Based upon the testimonies exhibits presented before the board, I strongly believe that this application should be approved. And I ask the board to grant the application. I thank the board again for its time.
While we're doing, um, we made this on our spare time. It's just to give you guys a visual of everything that's going to be here. Yeah, it's kind of everything I talked about. And, yeah.
Very good.
It's the bubble.
Hopefully, if you decide to approve and come to the store, you'll see this. I'm one of the walls.
Yes, we're done. If anyone, uh, no more questions or comments? Someone like to make a motion to approve this application with the condition that the sign be uniform with the rest of the mall and be approved by our, our quoten, uh, officer, Mr. Di Lorenzo?
Make the motion?
I'll second that motion. I believe it's called channel letters, right?
Uh, please call the roll?
Chairman De Niro?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Mr. Conthes?
Yes.
Mr. Vanda?
Yes.
Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mr. Corvall?
Yes.
Mr. Breviano?
Yes.
Ms. Guammin? Yes. Mr. Norrato?
Yes.
Thank you.
I thank the board very much for that. Take that board back if you don't need it, right?
Welcome to Belleville, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next on the communi- ready? Uh, next on the communications, we have the topology to present the preliminary investigation to determine whether the properly, property commonly known as 705-757 Main Street, Block 10001, Lot 3, should be designated as a condemnation area in need of redevelopment.
I would just like to make an announcement before you start. Um, anybody that's here for this particular application, we are going to hear the expert witness on the topology. And then we're going to carry it to the next hearing in April, which is April 12th. So anybody that's here for this particular application, you can come back on April 12th and it will continue with cross-examination and, and public comments and questions. Thank you.
Okay, Adele, this is Rachel. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not to put the truth to help you out?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Uh, first name Philip, D.H.I.L.I.P., last name Abramson, A.B.R.A.M.S.O.
Thank you.
Great. So thank you, everyone, for your time this evening. Thank you for the time to hear us. Um, my name is Phil Abramson. We were retained by the township and the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation, uh, as was referenced during the introduction. Um, so I'm here to deliver that preliminary investigation and to sort of summarize what I found. This comes in addition to a report, uh, that we published and put on the record with you. So this is just sort of a summary of, of what that paper report was. So it, it looks like a lot. I'm going to go, I'm going to go through it pretty quickly. Hopefully, it's mildly entertaining. So I'm going to go through a little bit of an introduction, talk about the redevelopment process, uh, talk about the property. This is a really interesting piece of property as far as, uh, as from a planner's perspective. Uh, these are things that I find interesting. Uh, talk about the, the basis for light. What, what do we mean by that? Uh, what does New Jersey law have to say about this? Uh, and kind of make some conclusions and recommendations.
I hate to interrupt you, but I was just notified that the next meeting is for April, is April 11th, not April 12th. So the notice will carry to April 11th for anybody that's here for this particular application. Thank you.
I'm going to have to probably stand over there so I can walk through my own slides. That's what happens when you get like a fancy, uh... Okay, so, um, and I know that you have been through these before. I know you went through one at the last hearing, uh, and investigation. So I'm not going to belabor sort of some of this boilerplate stuff. But basically, on August 14th, the governing body, and this is standard process throughout New Jersey, um, issued to you, a resolution requesting, um, that you investigate this piece of property and come back to them with a recommendation. Um, since then, we, uh, we were also retained as part of that to do the investigation. So you have something, um, to make a decision on. And, uh, that, so that was, um, then submitted. Our report is dated February 7th, 2019. Uh, and now we're here before you go on the 25th. So what would happen after this? Um, if there was ever, uh, any revision that needs to be made or additional findings that come forward as part of this public hearing, um, before it goes to the council? And ultimately, the council or governing body would take action and they would accept, reject or modify the recommendations made here. And that recommendation basically is the area meets the criteria or the area does not meet the criteria. And it should not be designated. Um, one thing I will point out, and I think it's pretty important, is, uh, as, as noted up, uh, above in that first bullet point, um, that this is a condemnation redevelopment area. New Jersey state law now, since 2012, uh, gives municipalities two choices, non-condemnation and condemnation. Prior to that, they were all condemnation, which means that the municipality, um, as part of this, would have the right to use eminent domain, um, and take property if it meets some other hoops and stuff to jump through. But right now, we're just here to apply the criteria, which I'll get into in a second, to that. So what, what did we do as part of this investigation? We reviewed and even took some of our own aerial imagery with a drone. Um, external site inspections in December. Uh, we did some night visits, uh, which were pretty telling, um, of, of what's happening on that property in the evening and what sort of the evening conditions are, um, which we took some pictures that didn't come out that great, but I'll show you what I got. Um, and then we did interior inspections. We requested that the property owner, um, do a tour. And that's par for the course. And they agreed and walked us through every single building, um, on that site. And there's like 40 of them. So maybe not every single, but a lot of, a lot of the ones that were, most of them. Uh, we also reviewed, and, uh, I want to recognize and thank Frank for being the quarterback on this. Um, the fire department, police department, code enforcement, planning and zoning, building department, tax collector, tax assessor, uh, all the records you got on this property. And there's a lot of them. Uh, and sandboard maps. Uh, we also, as, as I'll get to, the property was involved in some pretty significant litigation with the federal government because of dumping that was happening into the Passaic River. Uh, we reviewed those, uh, reports, um, as well. And we reviewed OSHA records, you know, uh, worker safety kind of records. So, uh, getting into the property now, just to give everybody some context. I know, um, everybody here knows their town very well, but I'll say it anyway. Um, this is really at the edge of town. Uh, it's at basically the last complete site that's in Belleville. Uh, the sites to the north is split between Belleville and Nutley. Uh, it is across 21 and Main Street, uh, from, uh, the Passaic River. Um, and it's in kind of the, that upper northern edge of, of what locals call the valley. Uh, here, getting that right, Mayor?
Mark.
Good, doing better. Um, so, uh, and then this is the property as it stands. Um, interesting bit of history, uh, we'll go through it. This was originally a leather, a leather plant, uh, leather processing plant, all owned by one federal leather company. Uh, it was, it was purposely designed, tailor-made, to have a, a, a multi-process op, uh, operation like that, where there's things happening in one building and they go to the next building and they go to the next building, just like the way that leather is made and tanned and cut and packaged. So, um, but it doesn't, that's not how, what it's used for anymore. Uh, and we'll get into that. So, uh, but this is, this is the entire site. Um, and it goes all the way back. And if my thing was working, um, oh, there it is. All the way back to here, uh, to the train tracks. And then the other side of that is Main Street Motorcycle Mall, uh, and all that, just to get everybody oriented. Um, so one huge parcel, not multiple parcels, uh, Block 10,001, Lot 3. Uh, it's owned by Belleville Industrial Center, uh, owned, interestingly, at a local park. And, um, the land improvement value, uh, are, uh, 13 million dollars, 12.5. Um, and there's been a consistent decrease in property values, which is maybe the only time I've ever seen this, uh, in New Jersey. And I don't see properties outside of New Jersey, but you don't see properties going from 17 million dollars down to 12 million, uh, unless they raised the property. So there's tax appeals, obviously. Uh, 2018 taxes were 484, 625, just over 15 acres of property. So up until 1906, and we really did go all the way back, uh, it was used as farmland. Um, 1906 to 1938, it was developed by the federal leather company. Uh, 19, is that 38 or 68?
38.
38, so it was about 30.
68.
Okay, yep. Um, by the way, I'm joined by Chris Colley from my office, uh, topology. He's the one that really helped me, um, put all this together. And, uh, so for 30 years, it operated as the leather company in its current form. It was sold to the industrial center, same family as the current owner. So this has been a buy and hold operation. It's only been really two or three prior owners. Um, and then it's been operated from that way to the present as this multi-tenant industrial park. Um, so these are just some maps showing kind of that evolution. This is a 1906 map showing the area as farmland. Uh, this is the best map we can find. It's sort of a weird map, uh, but this is a sandboard map. Sandboard maps were made for fire insurance purposes. So that's why there's so much little details in there. Um, and then if you look at these maps side by side, 1938, 2018, basically all the buildings that were in 1938 are still existing. And that's, that's what's being used out there, um, today. So these are all the existing buildings. What did you say, Chris, 48?
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus, uh, the existing buildings. Um, it is, again, kind of a strange site. Uh, it's chopped up. It was, it was built for one purpose, um, and has slowly been adapted, um, by the, by the weather and by Mother Nature or by the owners, uh, to kind of yield to different, different uses. Um, so these are all the different, um, tenants, the tenant spaces that exist. Uh, 67 total tenant spaces, um, that we were able to, to identify, um, based on information from the property owner. And going into some of the planning history, which, which ends up being relevant, um, in terms of some of the public policy, uh, that, you know, since the master plans that we reviewed going back 10 years, uh, that the municipality has noticed, has characterized this as a vacant, underutilized, former industrial properties. The entire area, um, from the railroad to 21 needs to be reexamined and a new strategy needs to be developed. That mixed use should be, um, adapted as a, on this site in particular, Block 10,001, Lot 3. It's an impaired 15-acre tract that could serve as an appropriate transitional use between the neighboring multifamily, uh, to the north, the big box, uh, and approved to the south. So this is not, um, coming out of the blue. Uh, this is something that your municipality has seen to call it an impaired property. I think is an interesting word to use. Uh, 2017 master plan, um, changed, this is when there was change from the IB industrial district to the planned retail zone. Um, it did stimulate some retail growth, uh, along Main Street. Um, there was, I don't know if these exactly coincided, but there was a restaurant and liquor store and other things that were now allowed to be there. Um, some, you know, private folks did a great job actually, uh, improving some of those old buildings to, to give them a different sort of life and to be a different sort of asset to the community. Environmental contamination continues to be an issue in this area and that it does, uh, it could potentially hamper other uses. Um, 2019, we did another master plan reexamination. And it's, it spoke to, um, the continued need to really take a more proactive role in revitalizing, redeveloping land formerly dedicated to industrial uses, to stabilize the tax base, to create economic opportunity. Um, but there's a, there's declining IB and BF zones in the, in the valley area. And that it, this is, in my opinion, not, was not a zoning issue. But the master plan sort of says, if it was a zoning issue, this zoning issue should be fixed. Um, but this goes deeper. And that's why you have redevelopment, because zoning doesn't always fix everything, because use variances aren't always the main barrier as to why a site looks the way that it does. Um, so the property here, uh, is in that BF district. Um, uh, planned retail, light industrial, these are the permitted uses. I'm not going to go through each one, but the minimum lot size here is five acres. And, uh, one of the other things that we found, uh, was a pretty significant, and this goes, uh, up along the Passaic River. I'm sure people here know, uh, that there's been litigation with some major corporations and there's been, uh, all the pollution that happened in the river. This is part of that enforcement mechanism. Um, in some, um, from, from the documents that we've read, there was a pipe that was running. I don't know if it was running above or below. I went out there and tried to figure out how this sort of thing could happen. But they were piping chemicals, uh, a washroom and stuff, um, from another company that was there, Helyon Corporation, right into the river. Um, so that, uh, that was caught, that was cleaned up. Uh, they paid $120,000 settlement to the EPA, um, and that they're still monitoring wells on the site to this day. Um, so here's some of the existing conditions. Uh, as you see here, the, the power line, uh, on the side, properties in Nutley, uh, on the right-hand side of the page. So what we did was we talked to the property owners. We looked at the leases, we looked at the COs, trying to figure out exactly what's going on. It's a real, as you could imagine, when I first walked onto the site, like, what is this place? And how does this place work? And who's in these buildings? And, you know, so that was our first step, was to figure out how this property was being used. Um, so there's 28 tenants on site, uh, based on the information provided, uh, to the township, leasing anywhere between 700 and 56,000 square feet. Um, they're basically all within the footprint of the existing buildings. Uh, there's a wide range of commercial industrial uses. There's some pretty cool stuff. Uh, Ardenwind Binding Products makes, believe it or not, like the little bit of seam, uh, that goes on your, like your car seat. Um, and that, and they make it for like Audi and BMW and, uh, whatever. So there's some, there's some stuff happening in these products or in these, um, in these buildings. Unipack, they're, they're basically taking Vaseline and putting it into Vaseline jars. Um, it's like just interesting to watch people at their jobs. Uh, so, uh, there's a, you know, fabric warehouse, maintenance companies. Um, and, but despite the presence of some of these building, uh, some of these businesses, And, but despite the presence of some of these building, of some of these businesses, the vast majority of the properties in disrepair, uninhabitable, you know, area for collection of refuse. And it's just, you know, there's a, there's a saying like the tragedy of the commons, like when somebody's not watching, bad things happen. And, and that's a, this site's an example of that, just, you know, broken windows speaking of. But this is the kind of stuff you see on this property. It's just little bits of trash everywhere, little bits of disrepair everywhere. Sometimes a lot bits of disrepair. So this is the, this is, areas that need a redevelopment. This is really the first step in creating a redevelopment area, the first step in creating a redevelopment plan, the first step a municipality can do to take a more proactive approach, to find a new, you know, potentially require transfer of ownership, potentially work with existing ownership, to work with them to kind of come up with a mutual vision, and that's what a redevelopment plan is. Redevelopment areas allow you to do things like tax abatements, allows you to do things like redevelopment plans, do things like rent property. But the first step in all of that is to go through this process, because it's considered like this extra right that a municipality gets under state law. Go beyond zoning and take these additional controls. But the trade-off is, it has to be property that's considered to be adverse to the public interest, detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So I'm not going to go through each one of these. We've really cited three in our report, so I'm not going to go through the ones that, that aren't necessary. Criteria A, you're going to hear me talk about this, the generality of the buildings. That's important. Buildings is criteria A. Substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, you know, just generally not conducive to unwholesome living or working conditions. And we saw that out there. Things like woodshops and, you know, people applying chemical sealers and polyurethane and varnish and stuff, adhesives with no ventilation, that's like an unwholesome working environment. The discontinuance of use of buildings. This is the old factories as they became sort of decrepit, and they began to fall apart, and that they fall in such, such a great state of disrepair as to be untenable. There are buildings on this site that absolutely meet this definition. And then criteria D, areas of buildings or improvements, which by reason of their dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement, or any of these factors, basically, are detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So these are just, you know, negative factors of the property as they would either impact the occupants or impact the larger community as a whole. So going through the analysis, and these are all pictures that were taken from the property. So under this criteria A, standard, substandard, dilapidated, or obsolescent, these are the types of things that we're looking for. So going to obsolescence, what does obsolescence mean, right? Because there is, there's word underutilization in the statute. Well, they didn't use that word, underutilization. They used obsolescence. Why? My opinion is that there has to be, it requires two things to happen. It requires a building to be built for a single purpose that, that was functional at one period of time. And now that purpose no longer exists, or it can no longer serve that function, and as a result, becomes underutilized. So it's not just underutilization because it's an open lot or something like that. It's because that the improvements were here toward a very specific type of use that is no longer, that no longer exists, or is no longer suitable for this property. And as you could see here, this, if, this was purpose-built for, and continues to be the same campus that the federal leather company built back in 1938. It hasn't changed except for the, you know, in many cases, except for where Mother Nature took down walls or took down roofs or walls or whatever, because it just took its toll on this property. The generality of the buildings are substandard, unsafe. So I'm just going to go through some of these pictures right now of what we saw. I mean, I'll call some things out if people want to just call out. No, I'm kidding. But, you know, you could see here, you know, the splaying in the concrete. You could see that this building is just, is not being maintained, that the, this quote-unquote canopy wouldn't exactly provide a lot of protection from the elements, because there's holes in it. This is not the worst of it. What you see is, is this sort of thing everywhere. There's a reason why this is yellow. It's, it was to provide safety and so it can be seen. But because the way that the layout of this campus is, you see places where trucks and cars have run into pretty much everything along these roadways. These roadways are very narrow. We have some images when we were there of an 18-wheeler. And there's, there's 18-wheeler when we were here at night dropping off FedEx deliveries. They go up there. It's a public street. I was amazed that there was entire utility line running up here, and as if it was, and it's giving kind of service lines to all these different buildings, but as if it was a public street. You know, again, this is a building that is, I believe this one is not occupied. These, a lot of these buildings have very damaged roofs, and there's water coming in through the walls and through the ceilings. Another building, you know, you can see boarded-up windows. You could see sort of the ventilation, maybe for the furnace, I'm not sure, in there. You could see how, again, this vehicle was struck probably a number of times by a vehicle, and as a result, you know, you're, you're just having the facades being worn away. This is one where broken windows, broken walls. I think, you know, I think that these speak for themselves. A lot of these old sort of sofa areas are rotten. You see water intrusion, evidence of water intrusion throughout. Your mortgage company would not finance these if you were to be a buyer. Your inspection would not do it.
There's graffiti.
There's a ton of graffiti. There's, you know, again, the windows are all boarded up. And I was looking at this picture as we were getting ready for this evening earlier today. I said, Chris, what's the weird thing about this picture? And you have this one way in here, and then you have the truck going the other way. So, but this is, it's a, it's a, it's a disorganized, chaotic place. You say to yourself, well, you know, as you've been back there, and you can see how far away it goes from the public street, how far away it goes from the public eye. And like graffiti, as I was there, I was thinking to myself, that's the, that's the least of the bad things that could happen on a site like this. But they got, people have done a lot of graffiti over it. You know, it's another hoop building, cracked masonry, cracked loading docks, you know, splaying concrete throughout. These ultimately become structural deficiencies, and ultimately, the, these things do not continue to stand the test of time. Here you can see a recently repaired wall there, but that, you know, that's an area that sits a little higher. I don't see a guardrail there, so in theory, you know, you back up the wrong way. I almost did it in my own car. That there's no safety, there's no directionality on this campus. The, the streets are basically not paved, but at the same time, they're not, they don't drain like regular previous surfaces would drain. It's just, you come here on a rainy day, and there were puddles that were inches deep throughout the site. And that's one of the things that the law instructs us to look for is, you know, faulty drainage and things like that. Most of the windows here that were intended are boarded up. Again, just another example of one of these properties that have just been, you know, left to sit. More, more kind of examples of the same. This is one of those places where the stuff is worn away. The pavement has worn away here. You have like a lower area here to go down into, into this section. No guardrail, no safety. A door, you know, this is a not unlocked door that anybody can go into. I've been on, I've been doing this for a while. I've been going on a lot of like studies like this. I really haven't wondered if this was going to be my last one until, until I got here. That, you know, who's, who's in these? I was there on a, on a weekend, and, you know, who's, who's in these properties? There's no control at the front gate. There's no control, and I know you have a great chief of police, but you can only be where you, where you can be, right? But again, you're just seeing things like that. This is a, a building that is unoccupied. You can see that at one point had a concrete or stucco facade. No longer, these, none of the windows are actually windows anymore. They're all just boarded up. But this is the type of thing, this is dilapidation, right? This is, this is what they meant by dilapidation. This is, you know, a roof that has basically sheathing and tar paper on it, holes. You can see where the, these, helping the rafters are starting to sag. Eventually, the roof collapses in buildings like this. This is a few, you know, I'm not an expert in structural stability or architecturals. You can even see a little bit of tar, that somebody tried to help, help things out right there, a little bucket of tar. But this roof needs full sheathing, full reconstruction, but it hasn't happened. So the buildings that we considered substandard or dilapidated, you know, our attorney asked us, so are all of them bad? Like, how many? What percentage is in there? So we made this map, most of them, all of them, except for the liquor store and restaurant. Really did put a lot of time and money, they said over a million dollars into that. So the things that we saw, broken up, boarded, bricked-up windows, you know, cracked walls and foundations, lack of proper ventilation, preponderance of trash literally throughout the site, haphazard and non-existent. None of the buildings are labeled. You know, if there was ever an emergency there in terms of getting an emergency service to the right building at the right time would be a challenge, God forbid. And, you know, there's sealed means of ingress and egress, where, you know, somebody put bolts on an egress door. Was that needed for fire? I don't know, but it's probably unwholesome if that was ever to happen. Deteriorated walls, soffits, exposed wiring, sagging and leaking roofs. So go to the next one. Criteria B, the discontinuance of use of buildings. They're previously used for commercial manufacturing industrial purposes, and now that they're in such a great state of repair, has to be untenable. And untenable is not defined in the statute, thank you. So it is, what we took it to mean is something where it couldn't be leased with, with minor coat of paint or something like that, like, you know, are you going to rent a space that has broken windows or holes in the ceiling or anything of that nature? So it's sort of like habitable, but maybe even a little bit of a lower standard than habitable, because you're not sleeping there, you don't need to necessarily have the same sort of heat and plumbing that you would in a house. So we gave it, we gave it the benefit of the doubt. We still think that most of these are untenable, even if they do have tenants in them. This is one of the buildings that is vacant right now. You could see, I had no idea, this water was coming through the walls and coming through like that little area at the top of the ceiling and the walls, and just starting to pull up. This happens every, every time it rains. You could see it, just that these areas smelled, if you had smell-o-vision, you could, you could understand like what mildew times 10 is like. And there was mold all over the place. This is, these are, this is dirty. It's been allowed to sit and decay for a really long time. This is another building that you could see here, like literally a hole in the corner of the ceiling. That's it. And so these are not tenable buildings. These are not tenable buildings where somebody's just going to come in and lease it up. They've been allowed to decay for that long a time. This is what goes on inside many of the buildings, just places to put things. Probably that, you know, rather than take it off-site, just put it, put it in an old garage. Again, more mold everywhere, black mold. This was done, I guess, to make it so things don't fall through there. But this was actually a inhabited, an inhabited space. And some of these, you know, some of these spaces were so drafty, even in the one that does the auto parts, that like the workers there figured out these really creative ways to stop the wind and stop the draft of, you know, putting up like this sort of Saran Wrap and have heaters. But the, the buildings are, you know, I, I think, I think you're getting the picture here. Again, more, you know, cracked masonry, just open, open basement areas, cracked walls again. The windows, you know, boarded-up areas, more of the same. This was that egress that I hope nobody ever needs to actually egress from that door. Again, open doors, just kind of about the site. So untenable. Why do we say this? Substandard, dilapidated buildings, limited ventilation. You know, again, we saw areas of woodworking and people applying sealants and varnishes. There were sealed means of access in different locations. There was lack of means of basic sanitary facilities. I walked into, to one room, you know, maybe the highest functioning of the tenant spaces, and you just smelled human, whatever. And I was like, what is that? He's like, oh, the toilet's been broken for a while. I keep telling them to, to fix it, but it's, there's like this kind of acceptance on this site that's not acceptable by, by most conditions and by most standards. And so the untenable conditions are reflected. So out of, you know, those 60, what did we say, 67 buildings or 67 tenant spaces? 10 have COs. And 25, and there might be 25 businesses. So 25 businesses, 10 of them have COs. But of the total 67 potential leasable spaces, there's only 25 businesses there. There's been 27 notices for violations for unsafe structures, 28 summonses, generally speaking, since 2003. So this is an area where the townships have any trouble keeping up with it. Like, you only have so many resources. This is not a good use of your resources. And that's why this, these types of laws exist exactly for this type of circumstance. Of the aggregate area, only 240, so there's 340,000 square feet of leasable space. 242 is leased, 30% vacancy. That's roughly 10 times the average industrial space in this marketplace, according to CoStar. So it, you know, again, people are doing it, and you, you give something at a low enough price, and people will, people will lease it. If people are leasing it, certain companies are. But we're seeing, you know, 10 times the vacancy in a, in a moment in time when industrial real estate is seeing off-the-charts type of interest and success. Okay. Criteria D, and this will be my last one, I promise. Areas of buildings or improvements, which by dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement, all those things are detrimental to the health, safety, and morals of the community. So these are the types of things that we looked at here. Again, dilapidation. This, these could be, it creates the, the top area as unstable, potentially, if the wrong truck hits, hits the rail, the whole thing could come down. Again, just trash. You see the soffit here separating from, from the roof. This was something that, you know, in between the, the days, actually, this is not what I was thinking of, but there is a company there that collects and repairs shopping carts. I guess it has to be done. I never really thought about it before this day, but there, there they are, just all there. Street about the site. This is the most tame graffiti that we saw. I don't want to show you some of the other, some of the other stuff, but it's, it's all throughout there. Just areas that did, do not drain, more of the same, right next to residential, right next to your residences. And these are, these are nice. These are nice residences, not that any resident should have to live next to it. You see here, again, pieces of the site that were, you know, older improvements, just dilapidating over time. This is a party rental company, that's there, Hodges, which is like the oldest party rental company anywhere. But this is sort of the way that like the acceptable condition is on a property like this. When, when everything's bad, tenants just tend, tend to do bad things. And we're, and we're seeing that, and so it's only going to get worse. Hodges, Hodges trucks. You know, this area here, I was driving down, I was like, oh, yeah, you could just literally go right off into that loading dock if it was dark or you didn't know where you were going. No guardrails, no, no anything, no standards of a sort of engineering standards. You know, again, just the same aspects of dilapidation. Trash, broken stuff, on, you know, brush everywhere. So this was an old, there was a building that did crumble here, right? And it was removed. So this is the foundation of that building. So the buildings that were taken down in the meantime were taken down by, by nature. Again, just these massive kind of little lakes in the area and impervious. Excessive impervious is on the swimming. Excessive land coverage is what they call it in the statute. And this here is one of those monitoring wells, where you do that for the, for the contamination. You see this sort of stuff happening everywhere, where there's registered, unregistered vehicles without plates, vehicles with plates, vehicles that could never move by themselves, just jammed into everywhere. You know, along with like tarps and cardboard. There's a landscaping company that, this is where they put their tree stuff. I don't know why. There's a DPW truck, not registered, no plates, no inspection. But, and you're seeing this. These are the types of things that we look for in terms of like vehicle, you know, unregistered vehicles, vehicle storage, not necessarily a permitted use, to speak of like the least of the issues with that. But the vehicle- But vehicles are sort of just decaying on the site. Exposed wiring, exposed junction boxes, you know, potentially dangerous conditions. That door would not keep anything out or in. This was an area that's a loading dock, Main Street, like twenty-one is like right where these fences are in the distance. You know, I was looking up at the thing, all the kind of concrete is worn away, the rebar's being exposed. These are the things that when a building really starts to deteriorate, that create a very dangerous condition for people. And you see the same thing happening sort of along this area. I don't know what was in these tanks, but there are random tanks or barrels throughout the city. Just rotting, no plates, no registration. Another vehicle, no plates, no, just strewn about, this is in the front yard on Main Street. This is what it looks like at night. So like I said, not great pictures, but no lighting, no security, no fences, no access These are the, these are the, struck me as a dangerous place or could, a potentially dangerous place in the evening. And this is the, what's that? This is their directory, their version of a directory. Like when you go onto one of these big industrial sites with multiple tenants, you'd see like Building Nineteen, okay, I'll go there, make a little map. This is the closest thing to that. But the buildings are not marked, the buildings are not numbered, there's no access control, there's no security guard at the front. These are the types of things that you can see in a modern, non-obsolee place without faulty arrangement. That's what you're looking for in an industrial facility, modern industrial facility. It's not what you have here. So again, just generally, the property lacks striping and circulation controls throughout. Roughly fifty percent, building lot coverage is roughly fifty percent. Former building was quote-unquote converted into a courtyard. That was that area that I showed you. This overhang limits access. So really the only way in, only way out for most vehicles is going to be through here. For any vehicle like a fire truck, is going to be really through this one means of access. Which, given the stuff that could be happening here and given the types of emergencies that you could have here, you'd like to see more than one means of access. That's where trucks are literally hitting everything while it was going. This is what we saw. And like it was sort of funny, but not. The people, they were trying K-turn, 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 trying to get this tanker. This is looking up toward the site from Main Street up at the top of the site and they couldn't get it out. And the thing was starting to go this way and it was starting to go that way. We saw a FedEx truck doing something similar when Chris and I were there to do a night visit. So this is, and this truck, I think, was right before loading there. I don't know how they did all that, but it's not conducive to the type of operation that's even needed today in terms of the kinds of deliveries that they're getting there today. Other factors. So in the statute, it does talk about these or down here, other factors. I never used other factors until today. Today, I think that the management or mismanagement of this site is another factor. The fact that people don't have COs, the fact that there's no tenant, there's no directory, the fact that, you know, there's no permits, the fact that there's so many building permits Ten permits are outstanding, that, you know, somebody goes and says, I'm going to do something and then they never get an inspection. So did the work happen, didn't it? That, you know, again, four businesses with actual licenses in 2018, out of those twenty-five, ten have COs. Construction are occurring without permits. Your township has noticed that on a number of occasions. Ten UCC permits, there's been a lack of security, repeated code violations, twenty-eight summonses since 2003, and deterioration of common areas just due to a lack of maintenance. These were stairs that were constructed without a permit. And maybe I wonder, you know, you wonder why they didn't get pulled back in. So, and these are, this is the way that the building signage works. So it's not actually UPS or FedEx. It's saying, two UPS and FedEx, this is Building Thirty-One. Going into safety, dilapidated roads, there's dead-end layout. And it makes it so if you don't know exactly where you're going, you could have a problem if you're in a larger vehicle. Seventy-four reports to the fire department since 2014, that's a lot. That's a lot. Repeated code violations, two serious OSHA violations since 2015, unwholesome working conditions. There's a prevalence of trash throughout the site, environmental contamination, it impacted your, you know, your greatest natural resource, the state river. There's a complete lack of pedestrian infrastructure, like sidewalks, like talking about a sea of parking. That's, that would be a nice problem maybe to have here. Excessive land coverage is just, the site is not draining properly and it's, the water is sitting and stagnating and eating into the masonry. Morals, you know, I added this, but profanity in graffiti, but also just bad things happen on places like this. Bad things happen when no one's looking. That's a morality issue, lack of security. Welfare, obsolescence, declining improvement value, faulty arrangement, limits the number or quality of tenants that could even be attracted here. Deletarious land uses. I think you're kind of getting my point. So I've made, I've gone through this now several times. I appreciate you allowing me to make the record this evening. Criteria A, criteria B, criteria D. I think it's fit squarely in there. This is exactly the kind of site that the legislature was anticipating when they passed these laws. So tonight, we're here for the planning board review. And, you know, the one, the one thing I do want to mention in fairness, since the, and this is like a good thing, it's an indication of your success mutually, that when, that after this original notice was served upon them and they knew that this was happening, we went back with the owners representative, the owner's attorney, they got to work. We saw them getting to work and we did see some better movement on the site. These were probably things that were like fixing some violations, not tearing down entire buildings or fixing these roofs or anything like that. There's years of work to do on a property like this, but some efforts were made and I do want to recognize that on the record. And they don't change. So here we are, planning board review, designation, ultimately if the governing body accepts, rejects, or modifies, and then we move through a redevelopment plan, the planning process and plan adoption if and when it comes to that. So I'm available for any questions you have or comments. Again, I appreciate your time. I know this was long.
Shelby, do you want a little break before?
No. We were just going to let you do your presentation and then we're going to carry it to the April eleventh meeting and then everybody will have an opportunity, the landowner representative and everyone will have an opportunity to cross-examination, questions and comments.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Just one matter for the record. I'm Dean Donatelli, redevelopment council for the township. And just, I noticed it might, just for the record, it might be a good idea to swear in witnesses' post testimony, just so we're sure that on the record, everything said was true.
I was sworn.
Yes, he was in the beginning.
Okay. I'll do it again, if you want.
No. That's a little swear sandwich.
All right.
No.
All right.
We're going to carry it to the April eleventh, notice will carry.
I'll be back.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Someone like to, we're going to close the public portion in the meeting and if someone would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.